I'll call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to call the roll.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hittelson is absent and excused. Swadley.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Mijaski.
Here.
Engelberger.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Trol.
Here.
O'Connor.
Here.
There are 11 alders present.
Thank you, Lana. Are there any communications from our alderpersons this evening?
Alderperson Bartlett.
I'd like to make a communication. I sent an email to the councilman mayor earlier tonight or this morning or afternoon here and asked that we not immediately appoint someone to the open position or not open position, but the term for the planning commission position starting in 2017 for a three-year term. I just feel the planning commission has too many people that are geared towards new development and new construction, and I think with the historic nature of our town, we need to have someone there that also has some industry experience with historic restoration and historic preservation. And I'm gonna, I've asked the landmarks committee to make some recommendations on who that might be, if they have some good qualified people, and I would ask if there's anyone in the audience or anyone watching, if they have a strong background in historic preservation or restoration or know of people who are, please contact myself or the landmarks committee. I'd like to put together a list of qualified people and have them available for positions as they come open.
Thanks, Alderman Bartlett. I'll share what I, as I responded to you and the other councilpersons this evening. I received Matt's email tonight about four o'clock, and as committee appointments are done this time of the year, every time this time of the year, citizen appointments can take weeks to go through. We have, we're wonderfully blessed in that we have so many volunteer committees, but it also means this time of the year, a lot of contacts are made. So I start several weeks ago. I did already contact the commissioner whose term is expiring, and that is Commissioner Maloney, and asked him several weeks ago to serve again for three years, and he's agreed to do that. It is certainly the council's choice, if they so choose, to make that a change as it comes to you next week. But as is my job, I already put out an invitation that's been accepted, and that's what you'll see. They could certainly make a change if you'd like next week, if that's your prerogative. Alderperson Hirsch.
On two notes, I have two communications, but to follow up on Matt, and also, I guess, to follow up with that with respect to RDA too, since how we're looking for that site to be developed more green technology, I would recommend that the mayor finds for the person that is up this year, somebody to replace him that actually has experience in kind of sustainable green development, building development, and it would be a good complement to who else would be on the RDA.
And I apologize for the late notice, but those offers have already been extended too. So again, that's your choice next week as those come forward, just so you know that. You have to start early to get all these things going through. I know you had one other thing to share.
Yes. Second thing, I'd like to invite everybody here on council and, oh, sorry, I studded thunder. The Sustainable Stoughton, who a number of us here are involved with, is, are having a very community-driven Earth Day Expo on, actually, Earth Day, Saturday, April 22nd. It will be from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. at the Corus Public House, which is the old Catfish River Antique Store. We have many community members involved with this. We have WPPI with utilities, Parks and Rec, the Parks Department, the schools, the second graders and seventh graders are participating, the key club is participating. We have local artists, local farmers, other local vendors that has to do with sustainability, and then we have four free presentations starting at 10:30 a.m. A Native American woman will be talking about story or lore at 10:30. Phil from Phil's Bike Stop, the Stoughton Cycle will be talking from noon to talk about basic bike repair. From 1:00 to 2:00, we have a master gardener that's gonna talk about seed starting, and then from 2:00 to 3:00, we have a master gardener talking about container gardening. And then at the end, we're having a great big celebratory dinner that is obviously limited space, so you have to go online to buy your tickets. That Kale from Wendigo is actually catering, and so we hope that you guys all come and you are invited. It will be a great community event.
Very nice. Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
And you just missed, local musicians are gonna be there.
That's right. See, I wanted you to put that in there.
Not anybody we know.
I would wonder, Sid, that might be. Thank you. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few quick communications. The mayor and I have participated in the school district's strategic plan session this past weekend, and we will forward you any information we receive from the school district regarding that as it becomes available. On April 20th, remember to mark your calendars for the committee, the whole meeting, joint meeting with the school district at 7:30. Looks like it'll be held at the school district administrative building, which is also known as the boardroom, and we'll get you some more information on that. And then just a quick reminder to those that may be watching, that the brush pickup is scheduled for the 4th Monday in April, which would be the week of the 24th. They'll be doing a brush pickup citywide that week. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Further comments from our alderpersons? If not, I have a couple of congratulations to share. I'd like to congratulate WS TO. They've won a merit award in the Best of the Midwest Media Festival. So, Stoughton, Wisconsin, it says each year, Wisconsin Community Media hosts the Best of the Midwest Media Fest. It's a competition which recognizes the best in community programming. This year drew in nearly 200 entries from almost 40 media centers in Wisconsin, Illinois, Iowa, North Dakota, and Minnesota. Stoughton's WS TO TV won a merit award for Tom Richards Screen Time, a local television series reviewing box office hits as well as older movies. So Derek, a quote from Derek is in the press release, "I've been working on the concept of this program for a few years, but until the beginning of 2016, I couldn't find the right host." Tom Richardson has been viewing videos for his YouTube series and was the perfect fit for our program." So congratulations to WS TO for another great award. Not to be outdone by WS TO is our very own Tammy LaBord. Tammy has been an active participant in Positively Pawnee, as she is currently and has been living in Pawnee. Tammy, the other night, received the 2016 Wisconsin Main Street Volunteer of the Year Award. Congratulations, Tammy. Okay. All the awards are done, so I need to remind our alders, as I spoke a little bit earlier, reorganizational meeting is next Tuesday, 6:00 here at the council chambers. So 6:00 next Tuesday, Lana will be getting that agenda out, and we'll work with the school to get the agenda out for the 20th. We haven't seen that yet from them, but Lana will connect with that. This week is Dispatchers National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. So whereas professional telecommunications, we call them dispatchers in Stoughton, perform a critical function when an emergency occurs requiring police, fire, or ambulance, as well as those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activities, whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States by answering their calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services, and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. Whereas professional telecommunications are critical to our, this is counties, but I'd like to say cities, emergency response, and homeland security services, dispatching law enforcement, firefighters, emergency medical services, and other emergency responders 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas professional telecommunications are not visible as the men and women who arrive on the scene of the emergencies, but provide that vital link to public safety services as part of the first response or team. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Stoughton does hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 16th, 2017, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Stoughton in honoring and recognizing our dispatchers and the vital contributions that they make to the safety and well-being of our citizens, and thank you for all that they do. All right. That's a lot of wonderful things going on. So we'll move on to the presentations part of our agenda, and we have a presentation or some communications by Peter Sveum.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Peter.
Peter Sveum, chairman of the Redevelopment Authority. Just to follow up on a couple of items since our last visit, I'm here tonight in hopes that you will consider a proposal created by Alderman Jensen to remove the Highway Trailer Building from the demolition moratorium, providing that the adjacent foundry building will be saved and left in place, perhaps somewhat of a compromise. I have reason to believe that our developer, Tanase Development, will accept this compromise proposal, and I will, I'd like to make a comment about our developer. There have been comments made about our developer changing his mind or being evasive or frankly, not being trustworthy. I believe the RDA did a fairly thorough job vetting our developer. As you know, there are three of us went to Appleton to try to confirm some of the things that we were wondering about. I have no reason to believe our developer isn't fully trustworthy, and most of us on the RDA are looking forward to working with him. I think any of the comments about, negative comments about our developer are disingenuous at best and perhaps intentionally misleading, so I hope he would disregard those comments that have been floated around the last few weeks. I've asked our consultant, Gary Becker, to talk a little bit about the foundry building, and in closing, again, my hope is that tonight, the RDA will have the ability to move on with our dream and that you'll accept Alder Jensen's proposal. So, thank you. Yes?
Was there an update on the wagon building behind it? Was that still being talked about, keeping it, the man?
I think I'd like Gary to talk to that, but it'd be, well, go ahead, Greg.
It will come up when, you know, my proposals are 50, so we'll talk about it at that time.
Okay. Gary?
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Oh, got a little shock out of that. So after the last council meeting, I called the developer and talked about Alder Jensen's idea of saving the foundry building, and the foundry building is inside the Highway Trailer Building complex, and so it's the part of the building that has the sloped roof and the lighting from on top, and that is part of the wagon works complex that's the Highway Trailer Building. So that was the foundry that was used to make the metal parts of the wagons. He's fine with the, if the city wants to save that part of the Highway Trailer Building complex, as long as there's no housing in it, he doesn't own it, and that it's maintained and doesn't have a blinding influence on the rest of the development in that area. He's perfectly happy to have a community discussion about what the use should be. He just doesn't want to have any financial or have it have a negative impact on what he might be proposing for the rest of the area. So that's something we can build into the charrette, the design charrette that we're planning, and have more community conversations about the idea, if that's acceptable to the council.
Thank you, Gary. I'm sure we'll have further conversation as we get to that agenda item. And next is our public comment period. We do have a couple of folks registered to speak. Just a quick reminder that each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Lana will let you know when you're down to 30 seconds, so you can collect your last few thoughts. The first registered to speak is Roger Springman.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Roger Springman, 812 Creedeman, and what I want to do is make a few comments about the Milfab site and its historic significance, but I want to do it by first, starting with, I had the chance finally to go back and look at the proposals that are on the RDA website, and I don't know how many of you councilmembers, excuse me, did this, but what was impressive about the Gorman proposal is that they have huge experience in restoring historically significant buildings. In fact, if you haven't done that, I'll just do, you can do what I just did tonight, for example. They've done a number of buildings, and the first one I just want to highlight real briefly is the Mitchell Wagon Factory in Racine, Wisconsin. It's right here in their picture. And then they've got a couple other factories that they've rehabbed, turned into lofts or apartments. So my point is that over the last many months, I've been at a couple of RDA meetings, I've been at your meetings here, as you more than know, and I've heard a lot of adversarial comments about the Highway Trailer Building and why it should be torn down, why it's not significant. Here's the company Gorman that came to us and said, "We can do something with that building," and they do that by benchmarking what they've done in many other cities in North America, especially in the Wisconsin Upper Midwest. So if you haven't seen this, you should, because there's great examples of how old buildings can be restored and turned into something very useful. So with that said, the other thing I want to say about is this, I know that you have that proposal tonight by Alder Jensen to dispense with the moratorium on demolition, and what I would say to that is that you should not rush into it. This site is so important for Stoughton's history that before any buildings are torn down, the significance of what that site can and should be for Stoughton ought to be built into some public thinking. I tried to look and try to find on your website, Peter, the RFP, because I was concerned that the RFP didn't say exactly the importance of that site to Stoughton. So if I'm a developer from Chicago or somewhere in the Midwest, and I don't know that there's these very important and significant buildings in that site, I'm probably gonna ignore it and not say anything about the history that is there that I don't know about, and just go ahead and do what I normally do. And I think that's a huge miscarriage of justice. I think that site should have been fully recognized in the RFP if it wasn't, with regard to the importance of that site in Stoughton's long history. Finally, it's time for public involvement on this site. Sustainable Stoughton held a public forum, as you know, last month. We had over 60 people there at that forum, and as another example, you all know that I'm with the 1892 High School Coalition. We've got a Survey Monkey going, and on our Survey Monkey already, we have over 60 electronic comments by citizens on what they want to see done with that 1892 building, plus around another dozen or more at the library as a hard copy. So my point is simply this, it's time for the public to weigh in on this building, and I'm guessing a lot of people, if they really understand that site and the reason why Stoughton ought to benchmark what's there before we turn it over to a developer, let's get that done, let's get public input, let's not rush ahead and do something tonight that we may end up resenting or not liking in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And next registered to speak is Matt Hannah.
Thank you, Matt Hannah, 118 East Taft Street. I want to speak on, again, the trailer's proposal and urge you guys to please remove it from the moratorium, and really, it's, to me, it's a matter of the whole site in general and having a full vision, which what the RFP that was sent out was asking for. And out of 144 sent out requests, we got one. And now, we have a developer who wants to take this site and turn it into something great, and I don't think he's the one that's playing games. It's the one, it's us here who are telling him, "Well, no, actually, now we want to do this and this and this," after he's already submitted and said, "I want to work with you guys." So I don't blame him for having hesitation, for not knowing what he's getting into. I think if we do leave it, I think one issue that will need to be addressed is the current public safety issue with the building. It is currently barricaded off on the street because it's unsafe, so I think that's something that needs to be acted upon by the council quickly on what to do with it. And then if the developer does leave, what's the plan? Because I think this site really needs a master plan and not just a piecemeal of fix this building, do this piece, do this section, and there's no continuity with it. So we really do need a vision, and just picking site by site by site, it's not gonna, it's not gonna give us what we really need. And I would argue that there's another piece of property and feature on that site that's far more historical than that building, and that's the river. And if we don't do justice to this plan and have a solid master plan that highlights the river, something that we haven't had the ability to do, and I think is an enormous opportunity to take advantage of for this community that we've heard through surveys for many years that citizens want, that it would do, you know, it would stop us from being able to do that and giving a space that Stoughton citizens can really be proud of, the city of Stoughton can be proud of, can attract more young families to, you know, at the school district, the decline in enrollment. I mean, we need people to be coming back to Stoughton. It's something to be excited about. So I would urge you to really consider the message that you're sending to the developer, because if he walks away or if they walk away, I don't know what the plan is, and I'd like to hear from you guys, what is the plan, if that does happen? So I really think this is an opportunity to create a vision, and it sounds like he's willing to work with you guys and the city to get this done, but, you know, changing the full scope just doesn't seem fair. And honestly, I think it's an opportunity to protect, enhance the river, and ultimately preserve the river and give it back to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And those are the folks that we have registered to speak this evening. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda. Tonight, we have the March 28th, 2017 council minutes. I would enter, there's a motion by Lawrence, second by Boersma. Does any alderperson wish to remove an item from the consent agenda or from those minutes? Any amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. I'd like to ask the council's indulgence, as we begin old business with actually the first item under new business, our financial consultant is here from out of town, Resolution 48, 2017. We did talk with Joe Murray from Springstead last time we met, so I would ask if we could move that up and speak to that next, so he can head on out of town. Approval?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to agenda item eight, Resolution 48 of 2017. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Good evening. Joe Murray from Springstead, the city's financial advisor. Thank you very much for the consideration to move me forward. Yes, if you recall, I was before you two weeks ago. This is following up as we talked at the last council meeting and the next step of the process of getting the financing for your 2017 and 2018 capital improvement program, as well as the acquisition of the additional properties that was discussed at your meeting two weeks ago for city and economic development, the stormwater improvement projects, as well as the street extension and TID number six. If you recall back at your meeting on the 28th, you adopted Resolution 40-17 identifying that the total project funds you were looking for with the borrowing at $7,547,937. Based on that final sizing, we've gone to the next step of trying to developing the structures. The preliminary schedules that I've presented in my memo provide for an issue of $7,660,000 of general obligation promissory notes, which will have a term of just under 10 years. The plan would be to come back before you on May 9th with the sale results, for you to consider their award. We are projecting at this time a true interest cost of 2.7, I'm sorry, 2.4 percent. This has been structured in such a way to accommodate your capital improvement program for 2017 and 2018, as well as the purchase of the land parcels by wrapping it around your existing capital improvement program debt. And the reason we've done that is your capital improvement program debt is what you're paying for by the levying of taxes. You're paying for the stormwater improvements and the TID projects out of the increment generated from those, you're not actually putting those onto the tax roll. For the capital improvement programs, we also took into account the city's forecasted capital borrowing needs for 2019, 20, and 21 as well. Back in the fall, when you were considering adopting the 2017 through 21 capital improvement plan, we took, looked at the overall picture of the whole five-year term. Based on the preliminary structure for the capital improvement portion, as well as the land purchase, we have structured this to wrap such that your 2018 tax levy would increase by approximately $283,000. If you look, you'll see the table on page two of my memo, but it was structured in such a way that after that and moving forward, not only for the 2017 issue, but also the future borrowings of the CIP, you would then be able to hold level at roughly $2.5 million a year. So it's a one increase, and then it's gonna hold steady roughly out to 2025, then there's another bump up, and then it starts to drop off as your existing debt comes off the table. Just to remind the council, as we talked about at the finance committee, even though it shows that your debt service will drop off in the out years after 2025, the expectation is you'll probably need to be borrowing additional funds for other capital improvement projects, street projects, et cetera, in the future, that you'll be filling up that capacity. Based on this, we have projected that it'd be a 28 cent increase in your tax levy next year based on your 2016 equalized value. You won't get your 17 until the summer. Also, in the schedules that I've provided, I also wanted to remind the council that you still, it's not part of your discussion this evening, but as we talked about in the fall, I want to just make sure it's on our radar, so, because I know it's on yours. Back in 20, or coming up in 2018, there's also anticipation that the city will be looking to borrow approximately $8 million for the new public works yard. That, as we talked about in the fall, is being anticipated to be issued over a 20-year period so that we can minimize the tax levy impact again, and that's in the last schedule, but that'll be in roughly another $550,000 a year in debt service. We'll have better numbers on that, and we'll talk about structuring options next year as we come up to it, but just wanted to keep that on your horizon, because we're keeping that in our planning. This evening, you have Resolution 48-2017. This is what we call the set sale resolution authorizing and identifying the parameters to move forward. The next step, as I said, will be come back in front of you on May 9th with the actual bid results for you to consider awarding the sale of 2017A general obligation promissory notes. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. The motion, Resolution 48, came from our finance committee, so I'll hand it over to Alderperson Lawrence.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will move approval of Resolution, whatever it is.
Forty-eight.
Yeah, that's what it is, providing for the sale of $7,660,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2017A.
Second. Some motion by Lawrence, second by O'Connor. Comments or discussion? Alderperson Boersma.
Thank you. So, Joe, I was wondering if you could tell us just generally two questions, two answers to two questions. One is, can the city afford this? That's the first. If you can give us an idea about that, and I think you've talked about that before, but I want to repeat that. And then the second question is, what will be the impact for the taxpayers in our city?
Well, in regard to your first question, can the city afford this? We have tried to structure this to try to minimize, it kind of rolls into the second one, we're trying to minimize the impact of the taxpayer. As I said, the way this is modeled right now is that you will have a $283,000 levy increase in 2018, but then it holds steady. We're not looking at needing to do a tax levy increase for your future, your capital improvement program borrowing through 2021. That does not include the DPW yard. That's a totally separate issue that we discussed. We, as the city, back in the fall, that's a separate issue, but we have tried to structure this to try to minimize the impact. The question is, the impact is, like I said, it calls for roughly a 28 cent increase or a $28 increase per $100,000 in 2018. That would be, you'd raise the taxes to that amount, and then it would hold steady going out to 2025. So it would be a hold, holding at that point. It's really a question for the council to decide, is that something that you're comfortable with for the taxpayers and if you can afford.
Just a follow-up question then, and that is, so a family could expect, living in a $200,000 home, something around $60 a year tax increase.
Correct. It would be a $60 increase in 2018. It would then hold steady through, until 2025. It wouldn't be 60 next year, and then 60 in 19, and 60 a year after that. You're gonna raise it roughly $60 in 2018, and that'll hold steady.
Because we're on camera, I just wanted everybody to know that the impact is gonna be an increase in taxes at about that level.
And I just wanted to be clear, it's a one, it's And I just wanted to be clear, it's a one, it's an increase, and then it's going to hold steady. It's not a sixty in eighteen, and then another sixty dollars increase in 2019, so it'd be a hundred and twenty.
Right, but it's not going to go down sixty dollars in the following year.
It's going to hold steady out through 2025.
At that level of that increase that we have for sixty, about sixty bucks for
Correct.
A two hundred thousand dollar home.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Thank you, your honor. Joe, I have a question, because I'm new at this, as far as how you said how you're trying to structure it. And then you mentioned that in the fall with the eight million, is that going to be a totally separate deal that we're going to have to borrow against? And is that going to be the same type of structuring? And then how much is that going to affect our taxes? If you can, I know I got a whole bunch of stuff in there, but.
Sure. No, the, the eight million dollars I'm referring to was, is for the public works yard. We, and when I say we, I'm talking about me with the city council and the capital improvement plan back in the fall of 2017, when you were, or sixteen, when you were adopting the seventeen to twenty-one capital improvement plan. Council wanted to identify what was the cost for borrowing to do the DPW yard. And we, we looked at that and structured that as a separate issue so that everybody was clear as to what's to do this, what is it going to cost. So we would be, the city would be coming back in 2018 to borrow roughly another eight million dollars. And we would look to structure that over a 20-year period to try to minimize the tax impact. The way I, I try to put it is thinking about your own home mortgage. It's cheaper to do it on a fifteen-year basis, but you'd have a much higher payment. Cheaper overall, but you'd have a much higher payment each year. By doing it over a 20-year period, you have a smaller payment, make it a little bit more manageable on the tax levy impact, but you're going to pay more money in interest over the longer period of time. So we had planned, based on the conversations to this point, doing it on a level basis, level debt service over a 20-year period. So you'll look at roughly a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in 2019 associated with the DPW yard. The impact for that ballpark will be another twenty-eight cents, no, I'm sorry, it'll be another fifty-five cents roughly on your tax levy going into 2019 for the decision to finance the DPW yard. So that's, and it is a separate decision. That's not being acted on or asked to be acted on this evening. But that is a separate and would mean an additional roughly fifty-five cents, or fifty-five dollars per hundred thousand, or a hundred and ten dollars ballpark for that two hundred thousand dollar household that we were just talking about. That would be in 2019.
Thank you, Joe. I apologize. Alderperson Mieske.
So as those are being put on the books, we have other, other obligations that are being taken off the books every year, because we do this every single year, correct? We, we borrow every year.
Yes.
And we lose some of those obligations as we fulfill taking those, those bonds out. So we have a net, you know, it sounds like, yeah, we have two hundred, or whatever it was, fifty-five cents, but then we are losing some of the backend. So is it a net gain or is it a net loss?
You are going to be looking at a net increase. You are, we have wrapped your capital improvement program debt around your existing debt that's falling off. That's how you have the two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase next year, and it'll then hold steady through 2025. As your existing debt for the capital improvement is falling off the books, your borrowing between now and 2021 will be wrapped into filling that and holding your annual debt service level at around two and, two and a half million dollars a year. The DPW yard has been structured and discussed at this point to be a separate standalone decision, so that with level debt service, you'll know that it's going to increase the taxes roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. We could look to do more modeling, and we could look to wrap a little further. If you look at the very last page of the schedules that was attached to my memo, you'll see it does show the DPW yard. But your existing debt doesn't start coming off the books, if you will, after the borrowings anticipated in the seventeen through twenty-one capital improvement programs until starting in 2027. You'll see it drops from roughly five and a half, or two and a half million down to two million, and then down to under a million dollars a year. We could look to push out the DPW debt further and start filling in, backloading it, I think is, is what you're referring to. So that's not as much of an increase upfront. It will, as, back to the example of the fifteen versus the thirty-year mortgage, it will increase the cost beyond the eleven million dollars we've projected it. To borrow eighteen, you're going to pay back over eleven. If we push it further out, that eleven's going to increase closer to twelve or higher. So the discussions, that's something we can look to do. But when we presented it and discussed it back in the fall, it was as a standalone decision, and that I thought was the direction. But that's not to say we can't look to change that. When I'm standing in front of you roughly this time again next year, when we have a better idea of the actual cost, will it be eight million dollars? Will it be less? What have you? And we can talk about structuring at that time.
Thank you. Other, for, oh, council president Swedley.
Thank you, your honor. Joe, is there much of an interest rate change between what we're currently paying and what we will be paying when we wrap around that current debt?
Well, as a wise person said to me just last week, there's two types of people in this world. Those who don't know, those who know they can't predict interest rates, and those who don't know they can't predict interest rates. I don't even want to try to guess. The Fed has indicated that they're looking at two more rate increases in 2017. I think right now, the market is just so skittish as to what's going to happen with what the Fed's going to do for increases. The question is whether or not the federal government's going to come to a shutdown at the end of the month, or they're going to extend that. Whether or not the Fed is going to increase the debt limit for the federal government, that's still up in the air for this year. And now you've got the concerns of what's going on in the world in terms of potential military issues. So there's a lot of ambiguity and skittishness. I think the rates are going to clearly go up. I don't think we can go down any further. I think we, we're just spoiled over the last, you know, seven years over with the low interest rates. They're going back up. But even with the Fed increases that we've seen so far, we're back to rates that are still near historic lows. I mean, we're still below where we were five years ago in terms of interest rates. So they are going up, but they are still low. I don't anticipate they're going to spike unless we see something dramatic happen in the world. North Korea, Syria, Russia, something along those lines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll vote by roll call. Hirsch.
Aye.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlet.
Aye.
Motion carries on a board of nine to two. Thank you. Safe travels on your way home. So we'll go back to our beginning of old business and begin there with resolution fifty of two thousand and seventeen, as requested by alderperson Jensen. Alderperson Jensen.
Resolution R-50, 2017, resolution authorizing the removal of the Stoughton Highway trailer building from a temporary demolition moratorium. I'd so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Jensen, second by Trul. Alderperson Jensen.
Thank you. Reason I'm doing this is because of the idea that I had for, you know, making a change and, and taking the trailer building out of it and, and, and pinpointing the foundry building as, as the building that we want to save, because that seems to be the most historic and most architecturally interesting building that we have down there. I think it would also lend itself well to the, to the plan that they, that they have talked about. As far as public input on this, this, you know, this is not scientific in any way, shape, or form, but over the weekend, my wife and I just did some comments on Facebook, and we got over two hundred and seventy-five comments on it. And just to summarize, most of them wanted us to take it down. And the other, the other comments that were on there is most of them wanted green space, trails, and bike paths. And they also were very interested in the type of housing that was going to be put in there. They were, they had their, their strong feelings about that. It was, it was an interesting, it was interesting. We had, also had some very, very interesting comments on what to do with the building. One person posted some pictures of different areas that had a very similar building that, that had done this throughout. Well, one was in England, I think one was in Australia, another one was in the northwest. So I think it's, it's something that can be done. It's something that we need to work out, of course. It's going to be a very expensive process. So what I'd like to do is to, through this resolution, remove it, so move the moratorium, and then have a second one once it passes, if it passes. Then have a second referendum right now that would target that building as being saved until we determine whether it is possible to save it, if it does have, if it warrants saving it. You know, if we need to do structural engineering on it, we need to, we need to have a very strong look at that. So that's, that's why I'm doing this, and I'm, I'm hoping that the alders will be interested in this.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Alderperson Hirsch.
Thank you. And I, I thank alderperson Jensen for kind of starting the community open discussion. And I did look at those comments too. And unfortunately, I think because it wasn't an official kind of community forum, I think the initial part on Facebook was misleading. There wasn't a full disclosure of what the GORM proposal was all about. There was no mention that the GORM was going to use the money without TIF requests, and that it was, so what I read with the comments is people like, our, our tax money should not be used for that, but that they were not fully aware of what the proposal actually was. But I think the good thing is, is that it reaffirmed to me that we need to have a public forum, or more public forums surrounding these historic buildings before we make any kind of decision. Because I've been inundated with phone calls and emails regarding this building too, some for, some against. Again, because people don't have the full information about what the proposals were actually like, or what the significance of these buildings are. So I, again, would encourage the RDA, which I'm on at this point, to really have a good discussion, because I think we're starting to see people wanting to be engaged. And as one millennial said to me, said, hey, you know what? You guys started this process ten years ago. I was in high school. I wasn't involved in that. It should have been started again. Now that I'm a homeowner and have kids here, I would like to see these buildings safe. So I think, again, we just need to have public input before we make a lasting decision that impacts the whole community for future generations.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
I would like not to vote yes on this. One of the reasons is, is because it sounds like the information wasn't out there on the RDA website. And a lot of, this is a lot of information to take. And I know everyone's gung ho to due development, but I think there needs to be due process and allow the public to get involved with it. And even as a council member, truthfully, I haven't been able to keep up and go to all the meetings and know all what's going on. So I think before we tear some, approve to tear something down, we give a chance to the public to just give a little bit of time so we can look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or alderperson O'Connor, and then Engelberger.
I don't know if this would be for Rodney, or Gary, or Peter, but I'm interested in knowing if, what the structural condition of the building is. Is this the one that is barricaded off from the street?
Yeah.
So, why is that?
Staff has, has discussed this, and, and we, we have some concerns as well. The, the barricades were put up really because of a, a recent wind event that caused some of the materials from the roof to actually blow down into the street area, large sections of it. They've been left there, and we've been monitoring the, the space. So at, at this point, we're trying to understand the direction of the council. We, we do believe that if it is intended to remain standing for any significant amount of time, we should have an appropriate hired professional evaluate the building to determine if there's additional precautions or anything that needs to be done in order to make it safe for whatever duration of time is necessary to, to further evaluate the options.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, your honor. I, I guess, I'm supportive of what Greg's interested in doing here, but that's not what I see on the agenda here. That's not what I see in the resolution. I'm not going to vote for a resolution that says take down the moratorium and then not have something to replace it with. If, if somebody wants to, or if Greg wants to amend his resolution that's, that we have here, that states exactly what we're going to do with saving a portion of the highway trailer building, which is not the part that's out by the street, my understanding, you know, then I would be receptive to that. So, but for just blindly saying we're going to take the moratorium off of that building and not having something that basically says we're going to save this portion of the building, I'm not interested in that.
Thank you. Alderperson Jensen, and then Hirsch.
I appreciate what you said, what alderperson Engelberger was saying, that, that, and it's, then it's, we can do it as, as one motion. I just felt it was cleaner to do it, to do first to remove it, and then to have a secondary motion that targeted specifically what we wanted to do. First, I wanted to see if there was an interest in, in removing that. So that's, that's why I felt that if we did it this way, it would, it would, it would be cleaner. But if you want to do it as one, that's, that's not a problem. I would, I just need to figure out how to word that to make it so that it would be specific.
I've got alderperson Hirsch, and then Lawrence.
I just want to, you know, throw this out there as a, a caution of what you're actually asking to do, because if you're only going to save that one section, and according to Gary or Peter, the master developer wants nothing to do with it. So that means the city actually has to find a developer or has to pay for restoring it or restoration. And if that's the section, and they do not want it to be any housing or anything else that generates actually a tax for us, and we have to borrow for it, we are not going to recuperate that. As opposed to if you keep part of the part on South Street that can be put into apartments and everything, and that could be a tax generation like GORM had proposed, we actually could get some money back in tax, property tax. So you're now asking for the city to actually incur a big expense, possibly to restore that building. Because nobody's going to come in there and not be able to, you know, use it to generate some income to offset what the money they had to do to actually reconstruct it.
Oh, thank you. Alderperson Lawrence.
Thank you, your honor. Your honor, I make a motion to amend the motion on the table, such as the, the motion will say authorizing the removal of the Stoughton Highway trailer building and exempting the.
Let's call it the man foundry.
The man foundry.
Yep. Rodney, you want to put that up? Do you have that? So we're going to identify it visually?
I have a motion, your honor.
Yes, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Lawrence, second by Jensen. While Rodney's looking, council president Swedley.
And then I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's not done. You go, go ahead, Paul.
Well, go ahead, Tim. I'll, I'll defer to you.
I'll be quick. So I guess, you know, alderperson Hirsch does raise an interesting question as far as.
as ownership of that building, because my understanding is, is if the city owns it, the city would be responsible for all the costs that may be incurred in order to restore or maintain, or whatever we decide to do with it. Whereas if a developer was on the building, they have other options. They could use TIF money, or what other means may be out there in order for them to restore and use the building. So I think that's something we should at least consider.
Alderperson Lawrence.
No, I guess I'll hold off for a minute.
Greg, would you...
Okay.
I'm going to try to framework this, and you've got a pointer?
Yep.
Oh, awesome.
If it works, yeah, there it is, right there. This is the building that I'm talking about, right here. This building. In the research, I did a lot of research, too, since we last talked about this a couple weeks ago. This building, I can't put an exact date on it. I think it was in 1897 is when it was built. But we know it was built before 1912, and after 1883. So we have that. Now, if you also look at it, if you look at the east facade here, this has a pink brick on there. It's all this pinkish. That brick came from the Stoughton... Concrete, I believe it was Stoughton Concrete. I was getting the information from Dave Callen. He said there was a brickmaker in town here called Stoughton Paving, or Stoughton Concrete, whatever, and that brick was brick that they made. So that is part of Stoughton. The Milfab building, which is down here, is very similar. You can just see it right here. It is almost identical to that building. And it has the same facade, the same brick along the east side here. And I'm assuming on the west side, too, but you can't see it because it's covered up. When and if this is removed, this one, any of the bricks that we need could be taken from that and reutilized in the other building. The other thing, interesting thing that I found in my research is I was contacted by a fellow who actually worked in that building when it was still a functioning foundry. And that was right after World War II. It was in the late '40s. He was there. And he was there until they closed it down. So, I mean, there's still an awful lot of history in that building. There's a lot of... There's people that still remember it, people that worked for Highway Trailer that remember using it as storage. So, you know, I think it has a great tie to the community. It could... Yes, you're right, Regina, that it could cost us a lot of money. That's one of the things that we definitely have to look at. But if we don't save it to start with, and then take steps from there to look at all of the other issues that may be generated from that point forward, we will, you know, if we take it down, it won't, you know, it's gone. And if the developer is correct, they're not going to want to use that as housing. They're only going to want to use this part as housing. And that's the part that is literally falling apart.
Thank you. Alderperson Borzma.
I was just... Last time, I was pretty excited about the potential that you brought up in terms of saving it. And I may be naive, but I thought that that would be sort of integral to the... if we would do that, integral to the plans that the developer had for the rest of the property. I got a little disappointed that the developer wouldn't want to touch it, because I think in a development, all aspects of that property within the development should sort of tie into all the other aspects of the property. And so I think it would be nice if the developer could give some direction as to that building and maybe have some input, actually, into the structure.
Thank you. Alderperson Lawrence, and then Hirsch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess my only comments are, you know, this kind of redevelopment is, I don't think, very easy. And we've never done quite this before, so I understand the hesitation on the part of everybody involved in it. It's a big step to do this. But as we go forward, I think, you know, the paralysis by analysis can start to set in on things. And so it's all well and good to sit back and/or retrench, I guess, a little bit and analyze a little bit more. But at some point, we're going to have to make a decision as to what we're going to do. Are we going to do anything in this area? And it may end up having some bumps and bruises along the way. It's just kind of part of the process. And, you know, I think we've entrusted the RDA, the Redevelopment Authority, to look at what's best for this area, and they've come up with what they truthfully think is the best idea. Now, of course, we don't necessarily have to agree with that. But, you know, I think about my hometown, the Nina Minasha area, and all the redevelopment area. Go into downtown Nina Minasha sometime, and compare that to pictures of downtown Nina or Minasha from 20 or 30 years ago, and there's quite a significant difference. And they've done some wonderful things there, and maybe not perfect either. But anyhow, I guess the other thing that I wanted to say is that it sounds almost... what I'm hearing here is that we haven't heard from enough people, we haven't analyzed this enough, and it seems to me that we've been talking about this for quite some time, maybe not exactly this particular part of it. But the whole assertion that this is being rushed through one way, shape, or form, I think is not accurate at all. So anyhow, that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Thank you. And I just, you know, again, I'm not trying to make... RDA is a bad person, because I've been on it, too. What I've been hearing from the community is they would like some input. And I like to commend Greg for stating what the community, a lot of community members are saying, is that they want to preserve the historic nature of parts of Stoughton. And that came out in the comprehensive plan survey. And so it's just good practice if, before we tear down a historic building, is to get community input. And yes, we got community input 10 years ago, but as I was telling Gary before and RDA, that that's 10 years ago. The millennials who we want to attract to this site to have families, were in high school. We need to ask them, now that they're parents, and they actually are homeowners, what they want, and what is important to them. And that's all I'm trying to convey, is that before we rush in, let's get the community involved, because it's important to them. And I want this development to be a showcase, just like everybody else at RDA. But I want it to be transparent, and I want it to have community involvement. And that's why we got a grant to do these charrettes, so we get community involvement. So major decisions should not be made before the charrettes, and the community has their say.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just went through the numbers of the people that are on the RDA, and only 20% are voted officials. So that means that we have people to answer for, and we are connected with our constituents. I think the RDA's done a fabulous job, and they've got a tough road ahead of them. But without having a lot of public input at this point, I think it would be incorrect and not very transparent. And I mean, I know Paul's been on the council for many, many, many years, but I've been...
Hey, wait a minute. What are you trying to say?
Oh, you're just 25. That I've only been on one year, and I feel it's my duty that I speak up for my constituents if they are concerned about historic aspects of this town, that I represent them. And I don't think, with the makeup of the RDA only being 20% of voted officials, that we should vote without having the public have their say first. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple things I'd just like to say. Most of the people that are dealing with this stuff, including this council, are not experts in construction or historic preservation, that type of thing. I may not be an expert at it, but I've been in the construction industry for a long time. I've worked on historic buildings. I've been on a couple of different landmark commissions, and I know a little something about restoration of old buildings. I'm also a historian myself. I guess a couple of things that I would want to have assurances about with regard to saving this portion of the building would be, if you look at the west and the south side of this building, those are attached, there's buildings attached to them. So I would want assurances that either those outside walls are still there, or if those outside walls are not still there, that bricks be saved from the rest of the building to utilize to save those walls, and to be able to be built back up to a near original construction. I haven't been in this building. I've seen pictures of it. I've driven around it. I've looked at it. This is a fairly substantial building, construction-wise. I have been in the Powerhouse Building, and my understanding, when I went through that building with landmarks and with a landmark architect that's familiar with historic preservation, my understanding is that building has the same roof panels as this building we're talking about here. Is that correct, Greg, or no?
Not quite. The... If I could...
Into your microphone, though, please, Greg.
Use your mic.
The foundry building has... Oh, God, I can't remember the name of the tile. Rodney, do you remember what the tile is called? Okay. Anyways, it is a kind of clay tile, where the Powerhouse Building has a cement tile.
Okay. I was told it's either the same or similar, but basically put on at the same time. I'm not sure about that.
Powerhouse was, what, 1901?
Somewhere in there.
Somewhere around there, early 1900s. 1901, 1902, something like that. Rodney, pick up.
I think it would be closer to before 1891.
About 1891?
Because I think it was a grist mill before they generated power there.
Okay. And I know that, let's see, the blacksmith or foundry shop, which is now the Milfab property, that one was built around 1910. I've got an article in the paper that shows that it was built in 1910, and that's almost identical to the one we're talking about. And that one, we figure, was about 1897. The... Just to add a little bit more to it, the trailer building, I think, was right around the turn of the century as well. And that one has the... was built out of the Chicago bricks, the darker bricks. And I know that that's the bricks that my grandfather used when he was building. So anyways, it's just...
So my point is, I've looked at it a little bit. I'm not a historical expert, but it looks to me, with my experience in construction for 40 years almost, that the building can be saved. I mean, I've been to Indianapolis, where they've saved the fronts of the buildings on their circle, and everything behind it is new. But it still looks like a historic building. It can be saved. There's no doubt about it. Yeah, we're going to have to pay some money for it, probably. What I... The other thing I wanted to mention was, I don't know this developer, but who I do know is Engberg Anderson, their architectural firm, who also does historic restorations, and C.D. Smith, who is a very reputable contractor from the Valley. And I would equate them to, like, Findorf or Cullen, similar-type contractors. These are professional contractors that do professional work. And, you know, for us to say, you know, "We've got a building here, but, you know, work around it and do everything else, and we'll take care of this," no, we should be telling these guys, "This is part of the plan, if that's what we decide, and we want this incorporated." You know, the rest of the development doesn't have to look exactly like this building, but we want this incorporated, because it's historic for this city. And there's no doubt that that can be done with this developer. Now, if this developer wants to walk, that's up to this developer. But I don't think that's the case. I think we've been told that, you know, they didn't want to do it, but we're in charge here, not them. So let's get this thing going here.
Thank you. Alderperson Truul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it is, Peter, it's now been about seven years ago that we negotiated the purchase of this, give or take. I've had the good fortune of being on the RDA since that actually occurred. Actually, Peter and I had some of the initial conversations with the folks from Stone Trailers. Again, to refresh folks, originally, the moving out folks had looked at that property and had come to the RDA and asked us to consider getting control of the property. Literally at that time, the building owners, Stone Trailers, were in the process of engaging a demolition contractor to take the building down. We actually went to them and said, "Please don't do it the way you were going to." They were going to do it in bits and pieces over an extended period of time. And we instead negotiated an extended purchase price, where we purchased the building for $150,000, but we wouldn't owe the money, we wouldn't have to actually pay for the property until something happened, until we got a developer, or the project started to move forward, or 10 years passed. And so, again, just as a refresher, it was, again, I think about seven years ago, that the building at that time was... City staff was concerned about it, the state of disrepair that it was in. And so we got involved with it at that point. I bring that to it because I bring that up because, again, it was at that point in time that the RDA was really looking at what we were trying to create down here. Years before, we had always had said that the Milfab property would be the 800-pound gorilla, or whatever, but it gave us the opportunity to grab a hold of this, and we started talking about what our vision might be for this overall parcel of property here. Over the course of time, then, we continued to try and look at other properties and other things as part of this. And as you all know, over the last couple of years, a lot of interesting things have happened that have given us the opportunity now to get control of the rest of the Milfab property, and really bring a dream to reality. One of the things that has been part of those plans from all the way back, perhaps a dozen years ago, is to open up this property and to really provide a gateway, as Mr. Hanna indicated, again, you know, back down to the river and doing some things that are there. I would strongly encourage you to support the resolution as amended that Alderman Jensen is bringing forward. I think it does a lot of what we're looking for. I think this, the particular part of the building that we're looking at, is reusable. I think there is an opportunity there. I think there is an opportunity to make, have some type of a public use. When you look at the map, again, the other part of this is the property to the north of the building we're talking about, between South Street and the building, provides for an opportunity for parking, or green space, or others, again, some public element that they could even use come to this building. We've also, the RDA has also had conversations with the master developer about reusing some of the other bricks as a part of this. And again, to create a theme, to, again, tie back to the history of this property. And I believe the developer is interested in doing that. I would also comment that, again, throughout this process, I do get frustrated occasionally when we hear about the openness and the like of this. I don't know how we can do more than from an RDA in terms of being more transparent. When we started out this process, and last year, and went through the laying out the process and using Gary Becker to help us lay out a schedule and talk about what we would like to do, to reach out to developers, to make people aware of what we were up to, throughout the course of that, we outlined an overall schedule of when the RFPs were going to go out, when we would review them, when we would move forward, and go from there. As has been noted a couple of different times, over... As has been noted a couple of different times, over 140 potential developers were contacted, we received one master development proposal. We did receive two other proposals for two different parts, one from the Gorman Group on the possible reuse of this building. And as you know, we also then received a proposal from the moving out folks to potentially look at something on Eighth Street. Again, I need to back up and say that the plan for this was to look at the property between Fourth and Seventh Street and from South Street to the river. I think the RDA felt, was quite excited about the moving out proposal, not so much just about the moving out proposal itself, but it also just, it made us, it challenged our thinking a bit, at least some of us, to think that perhaps, again, we should be looking at the entire parcel that's shown up there. Because, again, right now, the highway, the road that you see on the right-hand side of the image up there is Eighth Street, not Seventh Street. So, again, as we meet tomorrow evening, the RDA meets again tomorrow evening, we'll be talking about the RDA proposal and the like. The large building that you see on the right-hand side, there is a warehouse building in Stone Trailers. Thanks, Greg. So when we went down this path last year, we outlined, again, the timing, invitations, we went through the process. As you've heard, and I don't need to rehash it, we ultimately had the one proposal we feel comfortable with, our master developer. We have talked to them about, you know, keeping, again, a historic element as a part of this. But I, as one of the few people that's actually been in that building, I would tell you that when I saw the updated pictures from Gary Becker, you know, things haven't gotten any better on the main part of the building. I think what Alderman Jensen is trying to do is grab a part of the building that is, that does have some aesthetic features that I think would be, would be interesting to tie back in, again, from a community side, again, whether it's, again, some element of community building, public side of this. But I guess I just wanna walk through that because, again, we are at a point now where, from an RDA's perspective, we've continued and have also purchased the former carpet warehouse building that's located just to the west of the highway trailer building. Again, thank you. To really help create an entry feature, you know, and really open up this property as we come on down Fifth Street. And so I strongly encourage you to support Greg's motion. We would like to move forward as an RDA. I think we can, we can still grab and have, you know, ties to our history here. We have an opportunity to, I think Alderman Engelberger is correct, I think the building that we're talking about, trying, the part of the building that we're trying to save, I think can be reused. I think we're gonna have other materials that are gonna be down there. And I think if we move forward with this, it really does set the stage for the design charrette that Alderman Hirsch has talked about. But I would remind you, or I would clarify the fact that throughout the process, last year, when we talked about the design charrette, it was always, at least from the RDA's perspective, in terms of when we put out the request for a proposal and the like, it was meant to give us an opportunity to work with the developer at that point, to try and help shape his vision and to give input at that point. I feel like it's been misrepresented a few times that it was, that that design charrette was meant to be maybe something that should have been done earlier, which might have been perhaps an opportunity for more, more public input on where we were going with the whole development. But clearly, from a standpoint of the process that we had outlined to the developer and that the RDA had been going along, it's our intent and our thought that later this month, we'll be looking to work with the developer and really say, give him an opportunity to bring in his concepts, but then also to get a lot of public input and say how he can shape that. Again, we're gonna get many opportunities to see what his plan is gonna look like going forward. But I guess I just really feel it's important that we keep moving. I certainly do understand the concern and the desire to keep, again, the historic tie, but I think that what's before us tonight is probably the best, the best solution we possibly could have. We'll get a chance to keep some of the history and some of that building. We'll be able to reutilize and continue the theme and, again, perhaps some of the materials from the balance of the building. But it will allow us to keep moving forward with what I think has the potential of being an amazing 14 or 15 acres along the riverfront that I think we all can be proud of.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, right now, I will have Lana read our motion, the amendment to Resolution 50, as was stated.
I have the amendment to the motion stating to authorize the removal of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building exempting the MANT foundry building from the temporary demolition moratorium.
Thank you. There was a motion by Lawrence, seconded by Jensen. With no further discussion, I will vote by roll call.
Say that again.
Sure.
The motion to amend was to authorize the removal of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building exempting the MANT foundry building from the temporary demolition moratorium.
Well, I would sure like to see something like, and incorporate it into the development. I mean, rather than just, you know, then what?
I'm sorry, Michael, I didn't hear what you said at the beginning.
I said I would, I would like to see something saying, in addition, incorporate it into the development of that building.
Developers agreement? Or into the development?
Incorporate it into the development. Yeah. I don't want, I don't want the RDA to go back to the developer and say, okay, they're gonna save the building, but you don't have nothing to do with it. I want us to say, we're gonna incorporate this into the development, and this is what we're interested in. And I think that they won't have a problem with that, but, you know, maybe others will think there's a problem with that, but I don't think there is.
I heard Council President Swadley ask, are you making a motion, Michael?
Absolutely.
Could you please phrase the motion for Lana?
Amendment to the...
So in addition to what she just read...
It's a second, this would be a second amendment, correct, Laura?
Yes.
Thank you.
To incorporate, what is, what are you calling the building?
Call it the MANT foundry.
The MANT foundry building into the development. And to incorporate the MANT building into the development. In other words, I don't wanna see the thing just sitting there or not being dealt with, whether it's dealt with with Tennessee, or whether it's dealt with with the other developer in the other part of the development. Somehow, I want to see it included in the development, not just saying, city, you deal with it, we're gonna develop around everything. I don't wanna see that happen.
Okay, so Alderman Engelberger has a motion to make a second amendment to the motion on the floor. Is there a second to his amendment?
Yes, I will second it.
Second by Borsma. Now for discussion, Alderman Lawrence.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm pretty sure I understand, I certainly understand the intent. I'm just wondering if it's necessary, really, inasmuch as there'll be other steps that we have to go through as we go through the process. Rodney, can you clarify? So right now, absent, I'm sorry, absent the passage of this amendment, the current amendment on the floor, we would be having a motion to demolish the highway trailer building without the foundry building being included in that, correct?
I think all it does is allow the opportunity for the demolition to occur, with the exception of the area depicted by Alderman Jensen.
Right, right, right. And so I understand Alderman Engelberger's point is that he doesn't, somehow, by virtue of that vote, that will orphan, I guess, the foundry building, and it will be...
I'm sorry, thank you.
Am I right, Mike, on your...
If I can just clarify, yeah.
Sure, yep, let's get clarification.
I could just clarify what I'm trying to say here. The reason we're doing this is so the RDA can go back to the developer and say, okay, the moratorium is off, now we can go ahead with demolition, okay? So what this council is deciding is, we wanna keep that MANT wagon building, or whatever the name of it is. And in addition to that, I want the RDA to understand that this council desires to have that building incorporated into this development.
I don't think that's unclear at all, but...
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I don't think that that's unreasonable.
Yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable either.
Well, we'll vote on, we'll see if it's reasonable or not, you know.
Lana's gonna continue to work on that, on the wording. Good luck, Lana, while Alderman Mayeski has a comment, and then Borsma.
All right. In the beginning, the presentation by RDA basically said that the, we started out with a master developer who first said, absolutely not, the whole thing's gotta come down, or we're walking, turned and said, oh, they won't take that, okay, so we'll possibly allow this to happen. However, they basically said they wanted a non-compete clause, so the building could sit there, from what I understood. We don't want them to be, we don't want it to be housing, we don't want it to be this, we don't want it to be that, we don't want it to be this, but you guys can do something with it. Pretty much narrowed it down to nothing. I think what Alderman Engelberger is saying is that this building is an important building for the community, and it will, it needs to be part of the overall comprehensive development, not a standalone by itself.
Well, that's not what we have on the motion.
I understand that, but I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if your wording is quite right yet, but I understand the intent and I agree with that 100 percent.
So if I could ask the clerk to...
This is what we have, yep, this is what...
Read what she has.
So the motion to amend by Engelberger was to incorporate the MANT foundry building into the development of the area by the developer.
By any developer, I mean, I don't care who the developer is.
The developer assigned to that project, so whoever that may be at that point.
Which it could be the master developer in this case, it could be whoever does the other part of the development. Seeing that right now, it's split up into two pieces, from what I could see.
Okay, I've got Borsma, Trul, and then Johnson.
I'll pass it on. I'm okay.
Thank you. Alderman Trul.
I think I understand, and I think Alderman Mayeski has kinda clarified it again, and that's, you know, when I heard Alderman Engelberger saying, again, what we don't wanna have happen is to create, again, another island that just sits there. Again, we have an RDA meeting tomorrow evening. Chairman Sveum is here. We've had conversations with the developer about the importance of keeping something here and tying this in. Clearly, I think it needs to be a part, it will be, if we move forward with this amendment and this motion, it's our, it would be our intent, from a council standpoint, that that building be included in the design charrette, which, again, gives the community an opportunity to tell us what's up. It'll give them the opportunity to perhaps do some structural, you know, check out the structural integrity, look at other options and things like that. And so I think that's the most important part of this, is clearly a message. I thought, actually, Alderman Swadley or Alderman Lawrence had made the comment, eventually we're gonna have a developers' agreement. We're gonna have things like, that's gonna come back. And so, again, those are parts of those things where it'll give us another opportunity to make sure we deal with the financial side of this. But I think clearly, Mike, you know, you've got my promise and that tomorrow, if this passes tomorrow evening, we'll make it very clear to the rest of the RDA that this is what we're looking for, that we wanna make sure that the Tennessee group takes a look at this and incorporates it into our master plan and our development here that we're talking about, you know, 14 acres.
Thank you.
And if the wording needs to be different, that's, then maybe it does, I don't know.
Do we wanna say the...
Okay, Alderman O'Connor would like to make a statement, and then let's get back to that motion.
More of a question than anything else.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay.
Yep.
Just a question for clarification. Peter, is this, when you were talking to the developer, was this the kind of thing that he said he didn't want? That he, that he, what did he want the city to do with this piece of property, or what is he willing not to do with this piece of property? For Gary?
Gary's talked to him more recently than I have.
The developers made it clear they don't want anything to do with this, and, but, you know, if you pass this amendment, what I would hope is that you don't assign it to a specific developer, and that it's, and that we leave the developer open, because I think we can find, potentially find a viable use and potentially a developer for that viable use. But before we go on that search for a developer, we need to go through this community conversation so we understand what the parameters are and the constraints that the city council would like to place on the future use of that building.
Thank you, Gary. Alderman Johnson.
Okay. I do not want the building to be torn down before we look at it. If we're doing the MANT building, which is further back, it's not gonna have any visual significance from the road if we can't see it. I don't know why we're voting on this to tear it down now, when we have, Regina has said that we have a developer, it may not wanna do the whole thing, but we have a developer that likes to do historical buildings. We're, we're working for a developer again. We don't work for developers, developers work for us. If they don't wanna do it, let them go away. I do not care how many years this has been going on, this building has been around for over 100 years. So for us to rush into this, tear a building down, to make it so that we can go meet, RDA meeting tomorrow night, is making me mad. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna have Lana repeat what we believe, so I'm looking for help, but what we believe Michael's second amendment to the motion is. Yes, please, no, the second one, the one that Alderman Engelberger made the motion for.
So I had originally the amendment...
Can you hear Lana?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. To incorporate the MANT foundry building into the development of the area by the developer.
Just into the, into the development.
So to incorporate the MANT foundry building into the master developer plan for the redevelopment area?
And go saying not master developer.
Incorporate the MANT wagon building into the development. That's the only addition that I'm asking for. And the reason I'm asking for that is so the RDA understands that this council wants that building incorporated into the development, period. However, that's incorporated down the road, that's up to the design charrettes and whatever development agreement we come up with down the road, and that's all stuff down the road. I want it understood that they want this building and they don't want it tore down.
Thank you. We believe we understand. Alderman Borsma.
And when I presented my second, that's exactly what I seconded it. I wanted it part of the development. Frankly, I would hope that the developer would help in this process because it's a development, it's a developer that we've kinda chosen, but just incorporate it into development somehow, make sure that we know that we're wanting to keep it, we're wanting to keep it, not just the bricks, but, which I think the developer, the master developer has also already said maybe that would work, but actually a structure. So that was, that was my second.
We have another comment, and then we'll vote on Michael's amendment. Alderman Hirsch.
Yes, I just wanna reiterate that, once again, the council is making a decision about a historic building without community input. You're saying that you, based on Alderman Jensen, that his idea and your idea is, it has more weight than the community's input, and that, I think, is really unfortunate because we have been getting emails, at least I have, and phone calls, that people want their input heard, and now, once again, you're making these decisions without their input. Like Councilwoman Johnson said, it is disheartening. I mean, every single one of you guys talked about, after KPW, how we weren't gonna do this again, well, how we were gonna have community input before something happens, and right now, you're doing it again. So why is the community less important now than when, a year ago, you were saying that their input was important? I don't understand it.
Thank you. Alderman Lawrence Engelberger? I mean, Lawrence Engelberger, that's a funny name. Alderman Lawrence and then Engelberger. It does, it does.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, you know, my only comment is, I think we have heard from the community plenty of times about this over the last years, months, and, you know, you take the comments, some of the comments that I've heard to their logical conclusion, and you end up with having to have a referendum, truly, on just about everything that the council would decide on. And so I respectfully disagree with the statement that we haven't had any community input on it. I've heard from plenty of people over the last few months about this, plenty of times, so that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, as much as I don't agree with Alder Lawrence a lot of the time, I do agree with him on this point. And just for Alder Hirsch and Johnson, you know, I've been talking about this building since I was on the RDA in 2012, and I believe that's when we bought the building, actually. And, you know, we have taken input for just about every meeting, you know, I mean, we've got opportunities for input at every meeting. I do agree, sometimes we do try to push ahead on things, sometimes a little too quick, but this has been talked about for a long time. I was a member of the Landmarks Commission, I'm not sure that they fully agree with what we're trying to do here with this.
They don't.
But, and maybe they don't, but, like I said, I've been on a couple of different landmark commissions in my career, I've familiar with construction, and, you know, as much as I'd like to save the whole trailer, Highway Trailer Building, it is kind of a mess, and a lot of it, you know, probably isn't worth saving. But I do believe this portion that we are looking at here is something that we need to preserve, and, you know, I've taken input from the community as much as anybody for the last five years that I've been on this council, so I'm going to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Alderperson Swadley, Council President Swadley, and Alderperson Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I do agree with Alderperson Engelberger's statements. Yeah, we're not going to please all the people all the time. My sense is, based on what I heard, even at the school district's strategic planning, that we're going to get a lot of input on what people would actually like to see down there onsite, and as part of the development, what they would like to see and what they don't want to see down there. They had a lot of unsolicited inputs just at the session over the weekend, and I would expect people to bring those thoughts and concerns to the charrette. I think people are more concerned about what gets built down there versus what buildings that we save. You might not like that, and I certainly have mixed feelings about that, but I think that's the honest truth, is that people want us to move forward. When we get to the point where we're actually making the decisions on what types of homes that we want down there, whether or not there's going to be bikes and trails for pedestrians, if there's going to be a walkway to the river, if there's going to be any commercial or retail down there, that's what people are most anxious to talk about, and I'm hoping that we can get to the point where we can have them conversations, and we really do need to listen to our community, because collectively, I would say they know much more than we do, and we would be very wise to listen to the comments when we get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Mieske.
Thank you. This kind of reminds me of when I first got on the council, we had another RDA project, which is going horribly bad, and still is, where we purchased a building because the site, they said, was not saleable enough, and if we bought it, we would be able to have this great sale and turn this property around on Main Street. So what did we do? We decided as a council to demolish a, an existing, almost one-of-a-kind residential structure with great historic roots, and I remember, at the time, and I'll never forget it, Director Sullivan said, oh, this building is just terrible, and I kind of just heard that exact same thing from Alderman Engelberger, talking about a building, who had no clue about what actually it could be saved or it could not be saved. That decision haunts me to this day, it's the one decision I regret most making, was agreeing with everybody, because I was too new on council to understand. We have a building here that's been, as Johnson said, has been here for over 100 years. A few more months, one way or the other, isn't going to bother it to be standing, until we get a real good decision on what the community would actually like to see down with it. It's not going to make a difference if we wait a few months to have that building removed, if that's what the community wants. However, you know, you can only tear it down once, and you won't be able to put it back up again. That building is, architecturally has its features, they all do. So before we go about deciding to tear one down for the good of the RDA, which we've done once before and shown how good that worked out, we still have vacant lots there that are no longer collecting taxes, and we've lost a little bit of our character in our town. So I'll be voting against all of this right now. I think that we're short-sighted here, I think we need to let the community have a little voice in this. It's not going to take us that much longer, and, you know, you're talking about time, you're talking about months, versus a building that's been standing for 100-plus years. You can only take them down once.
Thank you. We have two amendments, we'll work our way backward with the second amendment first, the first amendment, and then the original motion this evening. The second amendment, and I'll have Lana read it for us all, so we know what we're voting on, and then we'll vote by roll.
Second amendment is to, by Alderman Engelberger, to incorporate the Mant Foundry Building into the development with the second by Boersma.
Okay, we'll vote by roll.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Mieske?
No.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Bartlet?
Aye.
Hirsch?
No.
That motion carries on a vote of seven to four.
Okay, so that takes us to our first amendment.
Welcome to short-sightedness.
And I don't have that one written down.
Motion to amend by Lawrence to authorize the removal of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building exempting the Mant Foundry Building from the temporary demolition moratorium with the second by Jensen.
Okay, so we know what we're voting on, we'll vote by roll call.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Hirsch?
No.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Mieske?
No.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of eight to three.
Okay, it takes us back to our original motion, which was a motion by Jensen, second by Truel, to approve Resolution 50 of 2017. This is a resolution authorizing the removal of the Stoughton Highway Trailer Building from the temporary demolition moratorium. Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So before we vote on this, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, you know, we've had some difficult discussions on this topic, and I appreciate all the input that we've had from the community, from my fellow council members, to get to this point. It wasn't easy, we spent, we had a long night at the last meeting, this night's getting late, too. So thank you for hanging in there on this one. At the last meeting, I made some comments about some of the things that I felt that the RDA could improve upon and staff could improve upon, some of that has been done. There's additional documents on the RDA portion of the website under the agendas that I would suggest people that are interested take a look at. I know there's a meeting tomorrow night, and they're going to get the minutes updated, so I appreciate that. And what I would like to see in a couple of weeks, if possible, is to have the RDA come to the council again and give us kind of a summary about the Tennessee proposal that's posted on the website and about the moving out, so we can begin the discussion with the council and the community before the charrettes, so people understand what's in the proposals and the fact that they are just proposals, and that we do need more community input before we make any final decisions on what we would potentially include into a developers' agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just procedurally here, I think what we're really voting on is the resolution as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Amended.
Yes, thank you.
As amended twice, or whatever, so that's what we're actually voting on right now.
Thank you. All right, and Lana will read the roll call.
No.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Mieske?
No.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Truel?
Aye.
O'Connor?
Aye.
Bartlet?
Aye.
Motion carries on a vote of eight to three.
Your Honor, I request a five-minute recess.
All right, thank you. We will be back at 8:45. We'll reconvene and address item number six, Resolution 31 of 2017, which is a request by Alderperson Engelberger. So I should wait for you to join the table, shouldn't I? Welcome back.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 31-2017, I would ask to reconsider. Second.
There's a motion by Engelberger, seconded by Truel, to reconsider Resolution 31 of 2017. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Oh.
Well, we'll vote to reconsider it, and then we can discuss. Am I correct?
You didn't vote to reconsider the last one.
It wasn't a motion to reconsider.
Oh, it was not a reconsider.
It was a new resolution.
It was a new motion.
So is there no discussion on a motion to reconsider?
No, as soon as the motion to reconsider passes, then we'll go into discussion.
Right, but is there no discussion on that, or no?
I have to get out my little sheet here.
Do you want to reconsider it, or don't you?
I guess the motion passed. Reconsider your reconsideration? I don't know if I can, under the rules.
It doesn't, it doesn't give us examples on here.
It passed.
But there were folks who voted aye, and whether any, no votes to reconsider? All right, Michael.
Okay, I guess the reason I'm asking for this is, I did vote no in the planning commission, it was six to one vote regarding this, and basically the reason I did is because I'm a little bit of a hardliner once in a while, as maybe some people can tell, with regard to us following our rules and procedures and that kind of thing. You know, one of the things with regard to this issue is, it was the PSC that's making the call that, you know, this is what you got to do, this is your requirement, and we really didn't have anybody at the, at our last meeting from planning to, you know, answer questions on this, and I'm sure Rodney would like to answer a few questions on this right now.
Sure, I can, I can address it. This was built as a duplex. Duplexes as constructed, if they're constructed now, actually have to have a separate water and sewer lateral installed. That would allow for splitting that using a zero-lot line structure, or zero-lot line procedure, whereby you could have separate owners of each unit. While this one was constructed, it only has one sanitary lateral. The condominium process allows for separate ownership of each unit, but it retains elements in common ownership, and, or by the sanitary lateral is one of the common elements in this piece. So in a duplex situation, you may have one owner of the entire building, and you wouldn't have the ability to potentially shut off the water of both separate units, because it's an owner landlord situation. In this condominium, you really have two separate owners, and they both have equal responsibility for maintenance and preservation and repair of the sanitary lateral, in this case. In a rental tenant situation, you don't have that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Rodney. Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So on that point, Rodney, do the individuals in the condo, is that part of their condo agreement?
There's condo association documents that outline the common element of the sanitary lateral, they both have responsibility for ownership and maintenance and billing of that service.
Okay, and then the other question would be is, how many other potential duplexes would fall into this situation where we could get additional requests of this type?
It's hard to say. First of all, not everybody wants to split them or go through the condominium plating process. Not all duplex structures are intended to be separate ownerships. Many of the duplexes in this community are actually owned by separate owners and have rental tenants in both halves. In this case, this particular property owner is intending to try to sell off a piece of the building, so that there can be two separate owners here.
So do you foresee having additional requests of this type? I mean...
We can have this request, we can't prohibit a request coming before us. It's an acceptable way to divide property utilizing a condominium plating process, it's recognized by the city ordinances, so it is something that we can consider on an as-submitted basis.
So it would be on an individual basis, this is a precedent setting in your mind?
I don't think any of your decisions are necessarily precedent, you know, the setting. You know, this particular situation, as I described, new twin homes or duplex structures, now if they're constructed, require the separate water and sewer laterals to be installed at the time of construction. So these issues don't present themselves in new buildings that desire separate ownership.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Mieske, and then Johnson.
If I remember, the first time this came up, there was a statement made, I may be wrong, but I don't think I am, that Utilities was not happy about the situation the way it stands. Could I get a, can I get some information from Director Cardes?
No, we see it as workable, and when Rodney mentioned the separate water shut-offs, that's very important when we're dealing with the customers. If there was only one water shut-off and we turned that off so that someone could fix their internal plumbing, we'd be impacting the other customer. So that's why today we go with two and two. As long as there is an agreement that both of them are going to be taken care of, their sewer lateral, it's workable.
Just to highlight, this does have separate water valves, so there is a separate water shut-off to each part of the structure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Alderperson Johnson, and then Engelberger.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any additional cost for the city for this, and if there is, can we bill it back to the owners?
There's no additional cost.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things. I, you know, it wasn't my intention when I explained my vote in the committee that the council would vote my way, but they did, and that's, you know, can be good or bad, I guess. The other thing, I guess I, just a question for Rodney, and the reason, I mean, the reason that this has come to our attention is because it was going to cost them money to do this. Do we have any, did they get bids to see what it was going to cost them to do this, Rodney, or do you have that information at all, or no?
I don't know if they got cost, they didn't share them if they did. I should just explain, the condominium plating process is not a simplistic process for them to go through either. The attorney may speak to that, but there is a rigorous process, application fees, so it's not, it doesn't go without the costs going this route either. There may actually be some debate, and the realtors in this room may find it, individual condo units might be sold for more than the overall structure of the duplex building.
And, you know, I understand the condo end of this thing, I mean, I live in a condo, so I know, and I'm on an association as an officer, and it just strikes me strange when you get a... it just strikes me strange when you get a duplex that is now a condo association and you got two owners that are, they're going to have documents to, that, where they have set out an agreement. And it's just, it's kind of a strange situation, but, you know, these are some of the situations we're put in, I guess, with construction and development over the years as time goes by and, you know, there's ways to, to get around things. I'm not always willing to go along with ways to get around things, but it's, it's back to us here, so.
All right, thank you. So we've had a, a vote that passed to reconsider Resolution 31 of 2017. We do not yet have a motion to approve. Or deny, one way or the other.
I second to approve it.
Okay, there's a motion by Engelberger, second by Trul, to approve Resolution 31 of 2017. Further discussion, comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Ordinance four of 2017 comes from our planning commission for a second reading. Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Plant Commission brings forth ordinance four dash 2017, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of a portion of, of a parcel at 3201 Macomb Road, see proposed CSM Lot One attached in the city of Stoughton from RH Roll Holding to I Institutional. The Planning Commission recommends approval and I would so move.
It's a motion by Trul, second by Jensen. Okay, or Engelberger, I'm sorry. It came from that way. Alderperson Engelberger, thank you. Alderperson Trul.
Just as a reminder, this is the property that is being carved out for the West Side Substation. If there's any specific questions, I'm sure Mr. Cardes would be happy to answer them with regard of the substation. This did come before plan a couple of times. We talked about, had a, had a quite vigorous discussion about the landscaping, the placement and the like, and I think we, we had the opportunity to improve perhaps what this thing might look like.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding ordinance four of 2017? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No. We'll vote by roll.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Excuse me, Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
No.
That motion carries on a vote of nine to two.
Okay, thank you. While we've already addressed Resolution 48, we'll move on to Resolution 46 of 2017, coming from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Engelberger.
Public Safety brings forward Resolution 46 dash 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license and special events license to the Stoughton Ducks Unlimited and I so move.
Motion by Engelberger, second by Jensen. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety voted on this three to nothing to approve. It's a, an annual event that recently has been held down at the lingerie, I believe it is, and Chief could let us know if there's been any problems down there.
Yeah, no prior issues at all.
Thank you. Comments or question? Alderperson Boersma.
So I would have a question. Are there kids involved in this event?
If you would like to come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
We do have some youth at the event. There's not a lot. Anybody drinking alcohol is going to be carted at the door.
I'm sorry, I have to ask you to speak into the mic. Thank you.
We do have children at the event. There's not many, but we do. All alcohol drinkers will be carted at the door, required to wear a wristband. We have licensed bartenders on site.
And do you have anything set up for best practices?
For what?
Best practices? Best practices would be to limit the amount of beer or sold in a, in a cup or issues related to, yeah, that's, that's typically one of them and I think to keep the kids from, keep the kids from, you know, imbibe in the alcohol.
Yeah, we leave that up to the discretion of the bartenders. They're actually licensed Stoughton bartenders that work at establishments in town. They have volunteered to come out and so it's up to their discretion not to over-serve. We also only have a certain amount of alcohol at the event and when it's gone, it's gone.
And what kind of alcohol are you serving, please?
All we're serving is beer.
Alderperson Engelberger.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I would just add, and I think Chief Leck could maybe back me up on this, we do have some best practices with regard to our policies for these events and, and I know we've been working on them and updating them, but we do have some policies that are best practices. Is that true or no?
Well, we have, that'll be coming forward to the next Public Safety Committee mem, meeting and we have been using some of the best policy or the best practices as outlined through the Community Coalition on Alcohol. And one of the, one of those is it limits things like the, as the items that were mentioned by Alderman Boersma, but it, it is something that we don't require at this point. It is just a guideline that we will sometimes bring forward. Actually, usually it's brought forward by the committee members during our discussion about the event, so. And depending on the type of event where it's located also has a bearing on which best practices get implemented.
Plus they have to comply with the law.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Without further questions, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries with one no from Boersma. Resolution 47 of 2017 comes from our Public Safety Committee. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 47 dash 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license and special event license to Sustainable Stoughton for the Earth Day Expo and I so move.
Second. It's a motion by Engelberger, second by Jensen. Alderperson Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, actually a new event put on by Sustainable Stoughton and I am going to be abstaining and I believe there's a couple of other board members on our council here that may want to do the same.
Okay, thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
So I am the Vice President of Sustainable Stoughton, so I have to either vote no or abstain, abstain, and I'll be voting to abstain. We're having a celebration on, of Earth Day, which we've already presented during comments. This is a, this is a family event for the day and it goes from 10 o'clock in the morning until about 5 o'clock in the afternoon. There is an evening meal and live music, et cetera, beginning at six to nine. So it's really not, this is not meant for kids. The, the price of the tickets, although we want you to buy them, is not, is cost prohibitive to have families come to the event. So we, we've, we've had the tickets high enough, I think, that, you know, families are, we're not really encouraging families to come. So we're not anticipating any or very few children at this event and I just wanted to let you know that this one really is a, one that's focusing on really adults. It'll involve, you know, it'll involve beer and wine, but it's not a kids' event.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Yeah, and I'll probably be abstaining as well, but I just wanted to let you know that it is a closed event. It's not, and the alcohol is only going to be served from six to nine, just for the dinner, not for the whole community expo. I don't think that was clear. And so there are also, any youth that do attend and families are most welcome, they will be carted and have wristbands on and there will be a licensed bartender there. And so it's not a free-for-all and it's not open to anybody who doesn't have a ticket.
Okay, great. Any additional comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I abstain.
Abstain.
Yep, three abstentions noted from Boersma, Engelberger and Hirsch. Thank you. Resolution 49 of 2017 comes from our Finance Committee tonight. Alderperson Lawrence.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I move to approve Resolution 49, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the proposal for appraisal services by L.A. Dusterbeck and Associates, Inc., Incorporated, I'm sorry, for 2431 County Highway A.
Motion by Lawrence, second by O'Connor. Alderperson Lawrence.
I believe it's for $1,200 in the furtherance of acquiring that property for the Public Works Building.
That's correct, thank you. Comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
No.
I, we'll vote by roll. I think I heard two no, but let's verify.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Lawrence.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
O'Connor.
Aye.
Bartlett.
No.
Hirsch.
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of eight to two.
Thank you. And we will, I would entertain a motion at this point to go into closed session.
I'll move.
It's a motion by Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Trul. We'll vote by roll call. I know, sorry.
Sorry. Boersma.
Aye.